I'm calling for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And this is in reference to the Medfield Teachers Association Unit A and B, the AFL-CIO Custodians Cafeteria Workers and Secretaries. So do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Megan, so moved, and a second.
Second.
Tim Knight, now we're going to do a roll call. I'll go to Leo Bram.
Hi.
And Tim Knight.
Hi.
Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Jessica Riley. I, and we will leave this session and move to the to the breakout session or to the second link that the executive session that Jeff sent, okay? Thank you. So we are now moving to executive session.
We will return to public session.
And we will return to public session. Thank you so much, Megan. We will return at 7:00 PM.
Alrighty.
And Leo. And then Megan. Oh, and you see Megan over there? Yep. Alright. Once again, we are the most popular show in town. Our ratings are going through the roof. We do have quorum. I see people joining though. So what I think what I'm going to do is just maybe give another two minutes for people to kind of come in so that they can catch the beginning.
Andrew.
Andrew, I like your new plants.
Oh, yeah. I be.
It looks like you've done some decorating.
Yeah. Yeah. Bring my old shelf off the wall. So I got a new shelf. And I have been collecting plants during quarantine because I have nothing better to do, so.
I hear you. We should, um, we should trade cuttings because I'm.
Propagation holder over there. Like I, it's starting to work, I think. So we'll see.
You know what I actually was able to do for the first time, I think, in my entire life is I actually finally got an avocado tree, which will not bear fruit, of course, but I finally got one to come out of a pit and I just transplanted the other day.
Wow.
Big. Yeah.
Well. I know propagation is pretty wild.
Yeah. Alright. So, um, why don't I think, you know, I see people joining us as we go. It seems that we have about 104 attendees right now. And so I'm going to just call, let you know, the public know that we just returned from executive session in which we discussed matters covered under exception three of the Mass Open Meeting Law, which is to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And these discussions pertained to the Medfield Teachers Association Units A and B and the AFL-CIO Custodians Cafeteria Workers and Secretaries Units. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to call to order this March 11th regular session of the Medfield School Committee, beginning with a roll call, and then we will move on to the public forum portion of this. So Leo Bram.
Here.
Right. Tim Knight.
Here.
Megan Glenn.
Here.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brook.
Here.
And Jessica Riley, I am here. I think with that being said, I, we're going to start with a presentation or with Dr. Marston. So he can kind of fill the community in on where we are right now. And then we will take questions and provide answers to the best of our ability up until eight o'clock. And I say, let's open the show. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael, can you share your screen, please? So I have a short presentation tonight just to go over kind of where we've been in the past year, where we are now, where we're heading. So give folks an idea of what we're doing for the rest of the school year. I know it's going to pop up soon as Michael shares it. Thank you, Michael. Alright, next slide, please. So I just, you know, symbolically want to just recognize the fact that it's not lost that today is this one year, this last couple of days, the one year anniversary of us shutting down as a community, as a state, as a country. I think it's one of those times where, you know, we shut down a couple of days before the governor shut down the state because we started to get a sense of it was something going on, want to protect our students and our staff. And then shortly after the governor shut down for a couple of weeks, that ended up, you know, being the rest of the school year. So just want to really thank the teachers, nurses, the teacher assistants, administrators, custodian, secretaries, cafeteria workers, all our other staff that really, you know, pulled together for the last year to make this work and they've worked real hard. You know, many of them giving up their time to make sure that we're, we're doing the best we can for kids and I just really appreciate that. Certainly our parents who have had to take on more than they ever bargained for in terms of the day-to-day operations of their households, which, you know, many families have didn't go back to work, maybe some lost jobs, but had to try to balance work at home with their kids at home in last spring. And then on remote days, which I know is really difficult, especially for young families. So I just want to acknowledge and thank them for the work that they did over the past year. And our community really came together for us. Lots of, I think back to the rolling rally, how the community came out, hundreds of, maybe even thousands of people that day to support our seniors last year and our kids. And I know some folks didn't even have kids that were in the schools and they, their children had graduated years before, but just wanted to support our students. And I just really appreciate that. And then along with the town of Medfield, in all the boards in the town of Medfield, the community, the, the folks that worked the town of Medfield, it really was a real community effort, really supporting the school district and trying to make sure that we could do the best we can with our kids. And I know just financially with the CARES Act that came in, that came in through the town. And, you know, they were really generous with that and allowed us to purchase a lot of PPE and anything that we needed, the technology that we, that we used during our remote days. So I want to just acknowledge the fact that we, we worked really well together with the town. We always have. And they really stepped up as well as, as part of this. So I just want to acknowledge that as we, as we celebrate that year anniversary of the pandemic. Okay, Michael? So want to talk a little bit about where we've been, just to kind of frame the conversation of where we're heading. So we had the shutdown and we were remote, as I said, through June. The summer of 2020, we had a reopening committee. So we had 90 members of that that were, they were teachers, parents, students, community members, administrators. And we got together to really look at how we can design a hybrid, a remote and in-person model. So we developed that plan. We had 10 meetings in the month of July and then put that plan together and presented that to the community in August. And then it was approved by DESI as well. So that was really an important piece of our reopening that we did in September. And it was really a joint effort among everyone. We did many facility upgrades and PPE purchases in the summer. As Michael, when he goes through some of the bills that we use, the CARES Act, you know, thousands of dollars spent on upgrades around ventilation to make sure that it was going to be a safe environment for our students and staff to come back to in September. You certainly got enough surveys as parents where we got to get a lot of feedback and give us the information we needed during our reopening. And then the reopening plan was approved by the committee in August and DESI as well. And we started out in September with those mandated days that DESI had us start a little bit later than we typically do. So we started on September 16th. And our PD that we did in district really focused on technology use and then diversity and racism because we had the time to do that. It was important for us to, to continue that movement forward. And that, that gave us the time to do some of that work. As I said before, a hybrid began on 9/16, which was a lot later than, than we expected to. But every school district and state started on those days. We did not get to choose when we started. That was mandated by the state. I know there was some confusion early on on that, but that was really not our choice. Michael? You just go to the next one, Michael? You might have gone a double there. Can you go back? Okay. Go ahead. Thanks. Just go to the next one. Thank you. So in January, we started the process of bringing students back. We looked at our K-8 students with academic IEPs and those ELL students that we felt were at risk. And we returned them to four days a week. If you remember, we had that conversation and we put some information out to the community that the state had changed the student learning standards and learning time standards. And then we adjusted to that and increased our live streaming on 119. And then full in-person return for kindergarten students on 122. And then we announced that there would be a full in-person for all students by April 5th at the 128 school committee meeting. So that was our stated goal. And we wanted to bring all students back and we stated that in January by April 5th. So February, additional students return, nine through 12 students that we identified at risk or on academic IEP return to four days a week. All student cohorts returned on Wednesdays and we alternated those cohorts and that began on February 10th. And then full in-person return for grade one students on 2/23, right after vacation week. So we, we're here in March and the process continues. So we, last week, we had done our parent survey. We had 958 respondents representing 1,544 students. Pretty convincing in terms of whether they want a full in-person return for Cohort D. 97.41% versus 2.59%. And we were expecting that. And that's a, you know, a really good number for us and gave us really important information as we continue the planning process. Earlier this week, we were at the Board of Health meeting. And we provided some of our, the roadmap of what we were thinking about in terms of our return and got some valuable and important feedback from them as well. We've had meetings with the Medfield Teachers Association yesterday and today we just finished up about an hour, hour and a half ago. And then we're at our meeting here this evening, which I want to go over in more detail what our plans are. Michael? Just wanted to highlight some of the key communications that came out regarding the in-person. As you know, I, I send the updates and we've numbered them from the beginning because I think it's important to, to keep track of them in that way. So we had an FAQ number two that was sent out to parents in October. And that was when we got the first round of questions that folks had. We had a reopening status email on the, right before Thanksgiving. Update on learning time in January and then the synchronous learning update that happened right after that. An update on full person in, in February, a full person survey, which was launched in February, but went into March. Meetings regarding full in-person. We had that email to alert people of this week what we're doing. FAQ went home today, number three. So what we did is we took all of the questions that we got from their full in-person survey, put them into the FAQ and answered those questions. And then attached all of the comments that, that parents had put on there too, just so that everyone gets a sense of, of where people are. I think the other really important updates that folks got and communications they got were updates on travel, the binax testing, in the pool testing from our nurses. Our nurses have done a phenomenal job in the past year. And, you know, they've been a key role in that communication. And those three types of communications were important for our parents to receive. So we had some key areas that we, we wanted to address in order for us to facilitate the full return. And these areas were important to us, not only from an operational standard, but also for health and safety protocol. So I'm going to go through transportation, ventilation, some lunch issues, physical distancing, and then some of the pool testing that we're doing. And I just want to be clear from the beginning that all of the health and safety protocols that we put in September are going to remain in place. So we're going to keep all of those protocols. You know, when we're talking about one-way hallways, we're talking about, you know, not using lockers, wearing masks, all those protocols that were in place will still be in place during the full in-person learning. Okay, Michael? So let's talk a little bit about transportation. So that, DESI has removed the capacity limits in the bus. If you remember during, especially during the fall, when we had questions around transportation, we only had a capacity of 24 students per bus. And that was because of the zigzag pattern that they were asking us to put students in and we couldn't fit more than 24. And that was the capacity limit on all school buses in the state. Typically, we have 72. So if the capacity limit that DESI has, has released to us allows us to put 72 students on a bus, we think it's a really good idea to keep that to 47. So our limit's going to be 47 students or a maximum of two students per seat. We, we know that in the younger grades or elementary buses, normally when we have 72, that means that there are lots of kids that sit three to a seat. We're not allowing that. We're going to keep it at 47. We're going to keep the windows open for ventilation. So a lot of the studies that are out there in terms of the virus makes ventilation such a key part of that. And based on what we've seen in our school district and across the state, it's really important to keep those windows open for ventilation on the buses. And I know that there was some, some mornings that were in single digits and teens. And that was a concern for people, but we don't have to have every single window open. We had to have every, every other alternating windows. But really important to just keep that constant ventilation going on the bus. Masks still have to be worn, hand sanitizer must be used. All those things that we put in place in September are still in place, but the difference is the capacity limits are reduced. So that allows us to transport more students on our bus. Ventilation, which I've talked about. So we made a lot of improvements in August and they're really critical because everything you see about making sure you have safe and healthy buildings talks about the ventilation. So HVAC systems were repaired and upgraded over the summer times. We brought in our vendor train and another vendor Arctic Air that worked on our system. So we have HVA systems in our high school, our middle school, Memorial. We don't have HVAC systems in the other two buildings, but we did do additions there that allow for fresh air intake. Exhaust fans and unit vents were repaired. So the exhaust fans are throughout all the buildings, especially in bathroom areas, repairing all those exhaust fans so that they would work. And unit vents are those small heating systems that are in every classroom that circulate the air. Those are also all repaired. We did have some that weren't working well. We've installed the MRF-13 filters in the HVAC. We've changed them now. This is the, this is the third time that we've done that. We, we feel that's an important piece is to keep clean filters in there. MRF-13 is what's recommended for clean and healthy buildings. They're hospital grade and we think it's important to keep them in there. They're expensive, but they're worth it. MRF-8 filters, we're putting the unit vents because our unit vents couldn't take the MRF-13s. And we replaced them on the same schedule as our HVAC. HVAC fresh air settings have been increased 80%. So just to give you a sense of what that is, and we talked about this in September as well. Typically HVAC fresh air settings are around 30% in buildings. We've increased hours from day one to 80% upon recommendation from CDC and from the Chan's, Chan's School of Public Health out of Harvard. That was a recommendation they've had. We've done that since the beginning. We actually, two hours before the kids come in, we purge the whole system and just put nothing but 100% fresh air through there. And then because of the temperatures in the winter, we, we put that at 80% now. But that's been very effective for us the entire school year. We purchased Austin Hepper filters, Hepper purification systems for all classrooms at Dale and Weelock. So if there's no HVAC system, every classroom has one of these air purification systems in there. And they, they work extremely, extremely well. Classroom windows are open all day and that's a real key piece. Just like the buses, it's really important for us to have the classroom windows open. It doesn't have to be wide open all the time. It can be as little as two inches. Makes a huge difference with the ventilation, the circulation of air in classrooms. And then we've conducted air quality tests. So we went through about 90% of the classrooms, did an air quality test in all five buildings. Got those results back very, we did extremely well with those tests. And we just started again doing them this week. So we, we had them done on Tuesday at Memorial. And then we're going to go to all the other buildings as well, just to keep a constant check on, on the air and making sure that everything that we've we put in for, for the summertime is continually working and it's good for our kids and for our teachers. So physical distance is certainly one of the, the items that is probably most talked about in the return to school. I think that's been, I guess, a concept that everyone's been talking about. So I just want to start by saying that over 80% of school districts in Massachusetts adopted a six-foot distance in September. So I know that that was something that we've, we've been talking a lot about, you know, all the year long. And sometimes I got the sense that people were trying to frame it that we're the only ones that were doing it. Mostly 80, over 80%, were doing a six-foot distance for their kids. So I think that's something that I want to just make sure that, that everyone's clear on. As we go through and look at a reopening, we went through in, during April vacation and set up classrooms in various, in all of our schools. And we can accomplish four to five, five and a half feet physical distancing between students at Weelock, four to five feet at Dale, four to four and a half at Blake, and three to four at the middle, at the high school. And lunch will always remain at six feet. I mean, that's a really important piece because kids don't have their mask on when they're eating. So we're committed to making sure that kids remain having lunch at six feet. So what does that look like if we're at four to four or five and a half feet, say at the Weelock school? Well, at lunchtime, half the children will probably eat in their classroom. And then the other half would eat either in the cafeteria or the gym. Or when the weather gets nice outside, we'll try to encourage that as much as we can. But we just need to be a little creative with that. It's not going to be the same as, as always, everyone just kind of sitting in the cafeteria at six feet. We couldn't fit kids in that, that way if we want to do it that way. So we'll probably be a split lunch where half will eat in the classroom, half, then we'll switch it around and rotate it so that kids get an opportunity to eat at different places and not eating at their, in their classroom all the time. So we thought that's, that's a fairly good solution for those two schools, for Weelock and Dale. Blake has been great. I mean, they've eaten outside, I think, up until Thanksgiving, which was really, went well for those kids. I was able to visit a lot of those lunches in the fall and kids really seemed to enjoy that. But during the winter months, they've utilized the gymnasium, the cafeteria and the library, and we'll continue to do that. And we'll be able to space them out a little bit more in some of those areas to make sure that they're six feet. A high school will continue to have that grab and go lunch in that schedule. That's, that's worked really well for our high school kids and we'll continue to do that. You know, there's some key literature around this topic around the, the three to six feet, which again is, is all over the news and everywhere else that, that people are talking about it. So The Lancet, which is a really important journal for, for infectious disease and medicine, did a meta-analysis of 172 different studies on, on physical distancing, its impact on transmission and found there really wasn't a difference between, and again, it was in Europe, so we're looking at meters, between one meter, a little over three feet, and two meters, a little over six feet. There was no real difference in that. And that was again, a meta-analysis of taking 172 studies and going through that and analyzing the data and putting out that paper. So that was an important piece that came out of it. A study was released yesterday. It was conducted this entire school year on Massachusetts schools. It appears in the Clinical Infectious Disease Journal, which basically they took all the data that we submitted to DESI. So whenever someone, whenever we had a positive student or a positive staff member in the district, once a week, we would submit that to DESI. Now, they only took the, the positive student or staff member if they were in school during the infectious period. So those of you who've seen my emails, I always delineate that infectious period, the 48-hour piece. So those are the ones that they wanted to get and they want to get information. So they took all that information and there were 49 districts in the state that chose to open up below six feet and the rest were at six feet. And they, they took the, they did an analysis on whether or not students and staff were, were positive in school. And there was no discernible difference between in-school spread or transmission in schools that were at six feet or three feet. So that was just released yesterday. And it's, it's again, a really important piece of data for us as we move forward to opening full in-person. Michael? And this is just a graph that shows the meta-analysis piece. If you look at the bottom, the low baseline right along the green line shows there's really no difference along the x-axis here where it says distance, no real distance between, excuse me, no real difference between the one and the two meter in terms of the absolute risk or percentage of risk. So I just wanted to include that as part of it as well. Michael? So there were some, as I said, 49 districts in the state that did go below six feet in September. A lot of them were vocational technical high schools because of students that had to do shop or other career-based workshops, classes. They had to be less than six feet or they couldn't do them. So we, we've looked at that and we've got information from DESI on that. And there's no known cases of student to student transmission or student to staff transmission in those areas. Then we have a local regional district, not DS, but another one very close by. Due to overpopulation, they could not fit their middle and high school kids in at three feet. So they started at six feet, excuse me, they started at three feet. And they had no known case of student to student or student to staff transmission up to this point in the school year. So getting into our testing, which I think is something that's been really, really positive addition in the fall. We started in the winter, but really a positive addition to keeping our kids safe and keeping our staff safe in school. And again, I really want to recognize the nurses in their, under the leadership of Kathy Thompson that have done a wonderful job with these two programs that allowed, allowed us to, to keep kids in school and to, you know, really give us a good sense of relief in terms of the prevalence of the virus in our district with the pool testing. So the first one that we signed up for was the binax now testing, which is that rapid antigen test. We get the results in 15 minutes. We've used it since December. I said to the Board of Health on, on Tuesday that it's been very helpful for us as a district. If people are symptomatic and they have issues, we can certainly test them right away and get a sense of whether they're positive or not. But it's also been helpful for, when we were in that surge in December and January and we had close contacts, it was really great for our nurses to, to do some of these clinics to help out and make sure that they tested our kids to make sure that it wasn't any in-school spread. And it worked out really well for us. So the binax now was a great addition and that DESI has sponsored that entire thing. They gave us originally, I think, over 2,000 tests and they, you know, we order them on, on, say on a Thursday and they're at our door by Monday. So they've been really receptive to that and responsive. So that's worked out really well. And then most recently, our pool testing initiative, which has been something that is incredibly useful for us to get a sense of, of whether or not the virus is, is in, in our, in our district, in our schools and if asymptomatic people are carrying that. So just under 50 districts and 50% of the districts in the state are using this. This is also a DESI-sponsored program. But it, to me, was a no-brainer to sign up for because it allowed us to, to really get a sense of what's going on in our schools. So right now, 73% of our high school students and that 69% is about 70 now of middle school students are signed up. We have 291 staff signed up. We've made a commitment to do this to the end of the year. And it's really, really important for us, all faculty and staff and students, six through 12. And we chose six through 12 because that was the majority of our cases. And, and we've, and the literature tells us that older kids are transmitting more like adults than they would if they were, than younger kids. So that made sense to us to, to focus on faculty, staff, and then, then all of our students, six through 12. So DESI has said they will support this until April vacation. They originally were only supporting it until the end of March. They gave us an additional three weeks. And then districts must support for the remainder of the year. So we're looking at a couple of options on this, looking at some grant funding from DESI, looking at the stimulus money that will be coming at some point to us. But something that's really come out of this that's been really positive is parents have, have contacted us. I've been meeting with a group of parents weekly now for the last month or so, looking at how they can be part of the solution and, and looking at how they can help the district out and not just financially, but with, you know, hours of manpower, et cetera, and how they can help us out. So they, they are going to be launching a fundraising initiative that's going to help us support pool testing for the remainder of the year. But it's just a real positive that's come out of this that, you know, it's, it's, we've worked and live in a great community and it shows on times like this where people really want to just help out. So just the other important details to go over, and I think it's, this is critical. We talked about it at the, at the Board of Health meeting on Tuesday, we just can't let our guard down now. You know, it's 72 degrees out today and people are outside and we can't just all of a sudden think that the virus is gone and nothing's going to happen. So we just got to be really, really careful and, and this is really going to be a community effort to keep our kids in full in-person. Because it's, we can't let our guard down around activities outside of school. I have to tell you that all of our positives that we have for kids are all related to behavior outside of school. All of them. So we really want to count on parents to help us out with this, that if you want your child to stay in school, is to really help us out with making sure they're wearing masks with their kids. If they're carpooling, if they're high school kids, they're wearing a mask. All these important practices that we know are the right things to do. I think that we're also sick of this pandemic and sick of masking and sick of doing all, that we're letting our guard down too much. And this is just critical for the next, you know, three and a half months to, to keep us in school. So I just want to ask that, that people do that. All of our health and safety protocols, they'll remain in place. That, like I said in the beginning of this, everything we started in September will continue as we go through this process. Cohort D will remain in place for the rest of the school year. So those Cohort D will remain in place for the rest of the school year. So those folks that have elected for Cohort D, um, they're not taking that away. Uh, we're not taking that away. That is something that is is going to stay for the rest of this school year so that you can stay into that program. Um, school and at, school starting and end times are going to remain the same for the rest of the school year. We're not going to change any of that on people. Uh, release days, uh, will continue with the elementary grades uh, until March thirty-first. Um, April seventh will be uh, first full day uh, for elementary in terms of that, that um the Wednesday. So the the last two Wednesdays in March will be um, half-days. Uh, continue with that and that will be also for middle school and high school um, as well at the end of March. And then uh, the F A Qs answer many of the questions I think that you had in the survey. So we go to the next one. So we have a, we reached about an hour and a half ago, we reached a tentative agreement uh, with the Medfield Teachers Association. So I'm going to go through some of these dates with you. Um, I'm not going to go into great detail, even with the the question and answer piece on some of the details because um, you know, they haven't ratified the agreement yet and the school committee hasn't as well. So uh, it's a tentative agreement, but it it's very positive. You don't typically get to a tentative agreement unless you you've come to a um, a pretty good collaborative uh, uh, process to get to where you need to go. So in grades K to five, the state required return uh, is April fourth. I know most of you have seen that on the news. Um, the Medfield return K was at one twenty-two, grade one was on two twenty-three. Uh, and grades two to five will return on uh, March twenty-second. Um, so again, we're um weeks ahead of the state on that required return, which is important. Uh, grades six through eight, the state required return is April twenty-eighth. Uh, will return to grades six through eight on April fifth. Um, and then uh, grades nine through twelve are high school. The state required return, um, they're not even going to announce a date until some point in April. I'm not sure they're even going to um, it might be sometime in May that there'll be requirement for high schools to come back. Our high school kids will be back full in person on April twelfth. Um, and I think that's, you know, critical to to take a look at this, that uh, we are, we're going back ahead of what the state is requiring, but we're also, you know, we're almost at that goal we set in January. We wanted all K to twelve back April, April fifth. K to eight, we back by April fifth and we just have that additional week, which, which frankly allows um, additional teachers to get vaccinated for another week. Uh, and and make sure that they, um, again, high school, the transmission is much like adults. So we wanted to make sure that that safety was an important piece there. So that gives another week for that to happen. Um, but it does allow our kids to finish out their school year. It was some normalcy uh, and gets them back into the classroom and gets us all back uh, to the normalcy that we we truly and desperately need and and quite frankly deserve at this point. So, Michael. That's all I have. I I am not going to go, like I said, to a lot of details. We tried to answer a lot of those questions uh, in the queue, the F A Q number three that went out today, because there are a lot of great questions from parents out of that survey. Um, but I can certainly answer whatever um, makes sense. It doesn't go into too many details of our agreement that we just came to an hour and a half ago.
Okay. Um, thank you, Dr. Marston. Uh, I'm actually, unless members of the committee are are feeling very compelled to say anything right now, I'd really like to devote the rest of this time as much as we can to um, the question and answers and clarifying information. Um. And so I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask if you want to come over um and answer, uh, just make a comment or do a comment or a question. Um, if you could raise your hand, because this is a public meeting, we do need uh, you to have your name. Um, and to also announce uh, your address and um we will bring you over by uh, by video. So uh, it looks like the Newbergs. I suspect that might be Jill or Math- Matt.
Here, do you want, do you want Michael to stop sharing his screen?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, Owen, if you want to bring Newbergs over.
Uh, yeah, I was, had a
Hold on, hold on. If you could give me your name.
I'm I'm Matthew Newberg. I live at ninety-two Wood End. Uh, my question relates to um, the quarantine rules. Uh, I have multiple kids, so if one had close qua- contact, close contact with a a student, would all my kids have to quarantine or just one?
Yeah, good question. Just one.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, one of the things that could possibly happen when we go to full in turn, because we are going within six feet, uh, there, there's a potential for uh, more close contacts than we typically have, right? So that's, that's one of the we, we can't mitigate that risk. That's going to be part of it and that's why over eighty percent of us went to six feet in September because of that particular issue. So uh, it would just be the one that uh, we had that close contact to that student.
Uh, Dr. Marston, would that be, I'm sorry, uh, I, and I won't cut you off, but I just want to clarify, would that be would it then uh, be helpful or for the rest of that family who had been identified as a close contact to simply also kind of in an abundance of caution, get uh, tested? That means that something that we're thinking about, something that you would, that we've put into practice when we've had kids within families.
Well, one of the, one of the things that the nurses have told me all along is you can't be a close contact to a close contact, right? So if so, if we, if we lived our lives that way, we'd all be in quarantine. So um, the the close contact piece i- is related to that student that would be the close contact. Uh, but we, but I think the nurses would say, and I won't speak for them, but they would say, keep a close eye on the other siblings in the, in the, in the house. Because that's what we've, what we've seen with positive cases that close, the only close contacts we've seen that have become positive are those that live in the same home. So for instance, if if a parent was positive, uh, more than likely, when the child was positive, was related to the parent, that's what most of our our younger grade positive cases were, where the parents were positive and the stu- the student was a close contact to the parent and then the student became positive.
Thank you, Matthew. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, thank you. I think that answered my question. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess as parents, we all have these same questions, don't we? In a lot of ways. Okay, thank you. Um, do I have uh, someone else who would like to kind of come into the queue? Has any questions about any of this? Uh, Mara McTeer, if, uh, Owen, if you could bring her over. Remember to state your name and your address, please.
Oh, thirty-five Green Street. Sorry, I was Hello, hi. Uh, thirty-five Green Street. So I do have a couple of quick questions. Um, is the Dale Street, Dale Street before school care going to be offered?
Yeah, unfortunately, Mara, it's not. We're not going to start that program at this point. Um, so we are going to do the before care.
Okay, thank you. And um, and then um, will we get more information once the sort of like transportation uh, more so for my high school daughter um to uh, so like whenever the bus is going to be starting up for her or?
Yeah, one of the things I left out of my presentation that you just reminded me that I forgot to put in uh, was that we're going to be doing a binding survey next week. So I'll send out another survey similar to what we did um, the week of March first and that will be binding so that we can make all of our definite plans. I apologize for not mentioning that.
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
Sorry, Mara, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. I think that was it. Yeah.
Thank you, Mara. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Just about the buses, Jeff. Um, will there be assigned seating on the buses for the contact tracing?
Yes.
Uh, if I have, you know, I'm, if anybody else has questions, I'm not seeing anybody pop up right now, but I'd really like to. Oh, great. Julie. Uh, Julie Baker, if you could bring her over, please. Owen. And Andrew, I'm gonna, while we're bringing her over, I'm gonna, at some point, going to put you on the spot and ask you to kind of just weigh in a little bit about some of the information you've heard. Okay. I, I really want to hear what what you've been thinking as well. You've been here through this whole process. Hi, Julie, are you here?
Yeah, sorry, I can't figure out how to turn my camera on.
Don't worry about it.
I just had a question about the buses as well. Um, if if my students are already, my kids are already taking the bus two days. Should I assume that they're automatically on the other days?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks.
Bet. Thank you, Julie. All right. I, if anybody else is thinking of questions, I'm not au- automatically just going to be deciding if I don't see anybody for a minute or for a minute or so that uh, nobody wants to ask questions, but I understand that it takes some time to formulate them sometimes. Oh, look, it is Meredith Chamberlain. See? As predicted. So, Owen, if you could bring over Meredith. Hi, Meredith, how are you?
Good. Meredith Chamberlain, ten Pleasant Street. Um, sort of a comment and then a question. Um, just first, thank you for all your work and um, you know, in comparison to districts around us, I feel like we're really on top of things and we've had a great experience. So thank you. Um, my other thing is I feel like there's a lot of good anticipation for kids to be back full-time. But I also know that there's going to be some big social, emotional and academic adjustments for our kiddos. So I guess I just am wondering, is there a team in the district or professionals that are working on just helping with that transition back?
Yeah, thanks, Meredith. Great question. I know that um, fortunately, we we've added additional counselors in the last few years that the town has supported our budget. We've been able to do that. So um, our guidance staff is really um, on point right now and and ready to, you know, support kids as they come back. And I think one of the things that we have the advantage of that other districts may not, um, I think a lot of the the social, emotional issues that are going to come out of this are related to those students that haven't been in at all this year, you know, and and the fact that we've been in and now we've, we've again incrementally increased that. So uh, it went from two days a week to three days a week and we have a whole group of students that have been in four days a week. So we're hoping that that incremental uh, approach and that thoughtful approach will help that out. But we, we definitely have our guidance staff ready to go on that, Meredith.
Right, thank you.
If I can say, and I know that Dr. Marston and I have had these conversations and I know that they're happening across the district, that change is like, you're right, this is a positive change, but change is always anxiety-producing and anniversaries are anxiety-producing. And we can't kind of underestimate the the confluence of both of those things. And I think that people really are, you know, cognizant of that. Certainly, the conversations I've had around the district. So it's a good question and you're absolutely right, but I think it's also important for the the people who are here and watching to realize that um, that their kids may need a little support for this thing that feels really good for us, even at home. So thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, if, as people are thinking of questions, uh, maybe this is when I put you on the spot, Andrew. Um, and and really, you don't have to come up with anything incre- incredibly eloquent or anything, although you always amaze me. But what sorts of things are you thinking or from a student perspective as you're hearing about people coming back in?
Um, everyone is just like very thrilled, excited to be back fully in person. Um, and definitely provides a lot of flexibility um, for planning events. I know they're trying to plan like the senior prom. Um, we're trying to plan a pep rally and a lot of those things kind of hinge in the fact of whether we're not, whether or not we're at um, six feet or three feet inside or outside. Um, so it's definitely good to have some concrete plans in place um, that are like you guys are just saying, a very positive change. Um, yeah, I think that's kind of where everyone's headspace is at. I think as one person, that's kind of begrudging the return to school. I think we're all pretty tired of Zoom.
Amen.
So I love it. I just, I wish I could stay here forever. No, okay, I'm kidding completely. I can't wait until I can see people.
So, yeah, I know.
No, it's going to be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
The one thing I would add to that, um, you know, I didn't put in the presentation, but I know it was a question that came up uh, through the F A Q number three. Um, i- if, because we've been thinking about the, there could be increased close contacts or or not, but there could be. Um, so in grades uh, two through twelve, um, if a student is out because um, they're positive or they're a close contact or there's some other medical issue, um, they will be able to livestream into the classroom. So that's, that's a really important piece to understand because um, actually, in full disclosure, my daughter um, attended, uh, attends a high school that was uh, less than that actual example I gave in the presentation. And um, you know, she was one of those kids that just happened to have the bad luck of of sitting next to someone who uh, happened to be positive. And because she was in that six-foot radius and they were three feet apart, you know, she had to quarantine. So, I mean, I think that could happen to our kids and it may not happen, but it, if it does, um, our teachers are ready to to do that and to to support our kids through through livestream and let them have that window into the classroom. And no fault of their own, they're out of the classroom. It does not, however, support someone that decides that they just, eh, it's seventy-two degrees out and I want to stay home that day. Um, that, that's, that's not what this is about. This is about students who are out uh, because they have to quarantine or positive or have a medical uh, concern around that. It's not just because you, you feel like Zooming all day. That's not what we're doing.
Right. And and also, you know, it, think of this as, as any absence, you know, if you are too ill to attend school. If you are feeling terribly, take that time, right? We can always catch you up. But if this is one of those things where you're kind of mildly ill or you're out. That, yes, you can livestream, but still, I don't want to give kids the message that they need to uh, you know, drag themselves out of bed with a fever or feeling terribly and they can livestream in. We, we will always accommodate health. What we're really talking about is
Real health.
Part, yeah.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a real issue, yes. If it's, I don't feel like going to school, I'm tired. That's not, that's not
Right, but you know.
And I got to tell you that our Medfield kids have been great about this. You know, we've been keeping track of this stuff, you know, since September. And compared to other communities, our kids have been awesome and I expect them to continue to be awesome around this. But I just need to make that clear. That's not what we're doing, because there are other places where um, kids just choose to be remote and just don't go to school. And that's not healthy and that's not what we're doing.
Right.
Jeff, what's the, uh, what's the recommended quarantine time now? If, uh, let's say Andrew unfortunately was sitting next to the student and is a risk, how would, how long would he have to uh, quarantine?
So I'll go through it and if Kathy Thompson wants to uh, jump in, uh, she can, but basically she and I have talked about this. Probably find out that you're a close contact around day three of exposure, right? So then you can be tested at day five or six. And if you're negative at that point, you can come back at day eight. So it's a little bit different than it was when we're looking at a fourteen-day exile. That's not what we're talking about anymore. It's a little
As I'm assuming they do now. So if some, let's say something happens, say call the the parent. Your child is a close contact. We think it's this day and they'll inform us on how many days to quarantine.
I'm sorry, say, say that again, Leo?
They'll let us know how many days to quarantine, like we've, we know we had a positive case.
Oh, yeah. Nurses are are awesome with that. Absolutely, yes.
Oh, I mean, I, I do, because I mean, they could just say we're a close contact. I'd be like, uh, okay, then what? So, yeah, as long as they can provide that guidance, that's great. I mean, just to know how many days. Yeah. Sorry, Andrew, if you had another question, by all means.
Yeah, I just, sorry, I just was wondering, you want to have an answer to this question, but um, do you know anything about what the schedule is going to look like at the high school, whether or not we're going to be still be going one through seven every day or if we're going to have lunch?
Same, yeah, same schedule.
Okay, so one through seven every day with four days on these days.
Yeah, grab and go lunch, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dr. Marston, um, I wanted to bring over somebody from the public, Bill Werner, who has been working with you and with um, with Tim, who has uh, really done a lot of work on trying to kind of organize this parent uh, input. So, and I know that he wanted to talk about this kind of parent group that is uh, really organically raising funds to make sure that our kids can stay in school. With the pool testing and other issues, uh, other things that we need. So if we could bring over Mr. Warner, I'd very much appreciate it. Who is wearing a mask. Good for you.
Yeah, I, could you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. I just got off a flight and I thought it was important to join the meeting tonight. So thank you very much for uh, for giving me the opportunity. Um, hey, I just wanted to first start off and say thank you to all the the teachers, the administration, the school committee. Um, you know, over the course of the year to get us to where we are today. The, the creative, the creativity, the ingenuity, the dedication that all you guys have put forth. I don't think anybody really has appreciation for all the hours and effort that has gone into getting us, you know, where we're on today. And I just wanted to start by saying unqualified thank you for everything that uh, the entire teacher staff, administration have done to get us to where we are and for everything they're going to continue to do to make this, this year uh, this year great. Um, you know, I I reached out to Tim and and subsequently to Jeff uh, a month or two ago. And it came from the place of what I've seen in my business where, you know, a bunch of people in town will know, I work for one of the big club store chains. And I've seen firsthand the hundreds of millions of dollars that we've spent to try to get our stores in a, in a place that are safe and uh, and healthy for our team members and our our customers. And I've been amazed in terms of what the school district's been able to accomplish with the limited resources that they've had. And and sitting back and discussing it with with some of my neighbors, you know, it's just not right that we as a community, you know, haven't stepped up in the way that we should to really support this effort. And, you know, I really think we do owe a huge debt of gratitude, you know, to everybody involved with the school district for getting us, you know, where they are. And I think it's up for And I think it's up for us to, as a community, to really step up and help make this next 75 days or so of the school year the, the best they can be. This is a true, you know, once in a generation, it's a, it takes a, it takes a village-type moment. And, you know, we've relied on the school, on the school committee and the administration to do it alone for the most part to this point. And I think we're going to really need to rally together as a community and make the rest of the school year as, as great as it can be. So, you know, there'll be more information to come over the course of the next week, but I would encourage everyone who sat at home and wondered, you know, like we did, how, how you can help, what we can do to help make this a better situation, and really set the example, we're, we're as a community, we're so blessed with so many resources in the terms of, you know, time, you know, money, expertise. And as a community, we just haven't brought that to bear to support, you know, at the end of the day, what is our most precious resources, which is our kids. So I'm excited to get involved. I hope people in the community who are out there who are really interested in getting involved can think about how they can lend, you know, what they bring to the table to bear, and there'll be more to come. So we've built, we've laid the building blocks, I'm excited to say. The PTO is going to take the lead in working with the, the principals of the schools to really build that sense of community as kids go back. And the MCP has stepped up through their Fund to Grant program to help us raise some funds in terms of supporting everything we else, everything else we need on reopening. So we're excited to bring that to the community over the course of the next coming weeks, so I would say stay tuned. And, you know, last thing I'll say is when I, when I step back, you know, our kids are so resilient, you know, they'll look at this, this moment in time and hopefully it'll just be a little blip where, you know, they'll, they'll just remember it as this little COVID moment that, you know, hopefully won't be a big thing. But as parents, right, this is going to stick with us for the rest of our lives. And I think it's up for us to really set the example, example for our kids in terms of the right thing to do in this situation, which is really to step up. It's, it's not the school committee, school district, it's not the administration, school district, this is all of our school districts. And we really do need to band together. I really think we can set an example by which, you know, other school districts look at us and say, wow, Medfield really did it right. So like I said, more information to come in the coming weeks, and I would encourage everybody to get involved and we're excited about what we can do. So, thanks for the time and I will yield the floor.
I want to thank you, it's been, I've been following along and thank you so much for pulling it together. I think that empowering the community to get involved too, I think is very, very helpful and therapeutic as well. It's hard to sit there and feel helpless in so many ways and, and we're, I think we're coming out of it. And so I want to thank you and the PTOs and MCP and the others that have been involved, so thank you. It's been amazing to watch it all unfold.
I also, you know, I really do think that Tim Knight pursued this as a private citizen and just bulldogged it through in a way that I truly admire. And it was not as part of the school committee, but he just grabbed it and was not going to let go of that sled until he was able to really bring a coalition together. And I, and I want to thank Tim for doing that because it's, it's been, it's been a wonder to watch. And when we have so much to do, the fact that you were able to take this on as well, I just so appreciate. And I appreciate you, Bill, for really partnering with him around that, so thank you from me.
Like, it's been, it's been a team effort so far, there've been a lot of people involved behind the scenes. And we're looking forward to get the entire community involved to really make this a, a special moment for both us and our kids.
I would just close, I think Bill, not, not close, he, he had a good idea, right? It, it really is, let's, let's, how can we help? And, and we, Bill just represented what we heard from enough people. But it's been phenomenal, a few of the folks that Bill's rallied around it from PTO and MCP, we're just, we're excited. The community, it's a bit of, it's a missing ingredient to really make this work. And, and, you know, we're just, we're so, we're excited to try to, what, what you folks are bringing to bear. And, and it's, it's more, there is fundraising, there's PPE, but it's more about, you know, the parades, that first day the kids get in and they, they have a great experience and keeping those, keeping those things going. Because that'll give us momentum when, when the, when we're sitting in traffic and things like that, dropping kids off.
I do, I think back to the first time we got together on Zoom and talked about this, and we were, you know, where we are today, we talked about how can we, how can we rent the In-N-Out space in Milis and set up classrooms in there? Like, we had all these different crazy ideas outside the box that we were trying to figure out to get space. And, and now we're at a point where we're, you know, we're going back full in person. So I just, you know, I want to thank Bill and Amanda and Nicole and Kelly and everyone else that's been a part of this. And Tim, it's been, it's been great to, to work with you and I can, I hope we continue to work together in the future and then get some work done the next few weeks to get our kids back in.
Thank you so very much. So as we've been talking here, does anybody else have any other questions? I cannot believe this will have bookended quite so well that it will have, that the open question forum will actually end by eight o'clock. And always, if you have additional questions and, but if you have additional questions and you didn't hear them answered tonight, you know, I know Anna May is going to, to bring up some additional opportunities that we'll have later in the meeting, but also you can always email us and you can always reach out to your building principal. And we'll continue to just feed information as much as we can, as quickly as we have it to the community, so. All right, with that, I am going to close the kind of public forum part of this. And as long as the rest of the committee is feeling like that we've kind of reached the end of this, yep. Does anybody have any additional comments that they want to make right now regarding reopening on the committee?
I just wanted to unmute to say thank you to, to Bill, because that was very moving and I just have no words. Thank you so much, and thank you, Tim.
It is very nice to, to be able to kind of stand where we live and, and point our feet forward and know that we're moving into the future and not having to think about how are we just running in place right now? It's...
I don't recognize the feeling. I like it.
I like it too.
We bask in it for a little.
I know, it was just when Bill was speaking, I just thought, you know, that's, that's the Medfield I love, you know?
I know.
In terms of coming together, community, unity, and what can we do not, you know? So that just really warmed my heart and Tim Knight, man.
Harnessing it. Harness, thank you. The good.
I just ran into the guy in the neighborhood over the holidays and...
But you stuck with it, Tim.
Yes.
You stuck with it.
That is a...
Thank you.
That is one of Tim's core competencies, is sticking with it, man. Very good. All right, so thank you so much. I'm going to close this particular agenda item and then we are going to move on to the always incredibly important, but somewhat more mundane parts of our business, but no less important. So at this point, I am going to call for public input on items that are not on this evening's agenda. And this is our regularly scheduled public input. And we'll follow the usual kind of format of our regular meetings. So I'll read you the statement from our policy, which is, "Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business that are not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action or discussion at this time at the meeting at which the item is presented." And again, to indicate that you would like to make a comment on something that is not on the agenda, please just raise your hand and with your name and your address and we will bring you over. So I'm going to give a little bit of time to see if I, anybody needs to click in. And then the next thing we'll move on to is an approval of minutes. All right, I'm going to make a reasonable guess that we do not have additional public comment at this point on items that are not on the agenda. So we move on to, oh, and sorry, that is my alarm for the end of the public comment, I apologize. The next item on the agenda is the approval of three kind of tranches of minutes.
There was a hand there.
Oh my goodness, all right, thank you, I missed a hand, thank you so much. I've asked the committee to tell me when there's a hand up, if I don't know. So could we bring this person over, and if you can just state your full name and your address, I'd appreciate it?
Hi, I'm Danielle Remake, I live on Indian Hill Road. And my question is about the MERJ that was approved by the committee in October. And I have been in talks with Nat and Mr. Marsden about the definition of racism and how it says it only privileges white people. And I'm just wondering, having looked at what the MERJ, you know, definitions and stuff, do you guys still approve this and want to continue with this, knowing that not all the parents agree? Or the definition is incorrect?
So I think that we have the diversity, equity, inclusion establishment of a task force later on the agenda. And within this public input portion, we don't generally answer questions, we simply just take information in. But that is something that you can feel free to ask within public comment then, and I'll, I'll make a note of it. Now, I'm assuming that MERJ is the Medfield educators for racial justice, is that correct? That would be the...
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We will kind of move that comment to the, to the agenda item that's closer at the end or under new business, okay? Thank you so much, I appreciate coming over. And do I have any other comments, or can we, let's move on to the approval of minutes, okay? The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the executive session meeting minutes of 1/28/21 to 9/21 to 11/21 to 22/21 and 2/26/21. However, Dr. Marsden and the recording secretary, Tim, would like to review this particular tranche of minutes again, which pertain to matters that are still in discussion. And so I'd like to ask the rest of the committee if you would be okay with postponing this particular batch of executive session minutes to the next meeting, so that Dr. Marsden and the recording secretary can kind of look them over and make sure that they're fully detailed enough? Do I have any thoughts or comments on that, anything that would be an objection to that?
I think it's better to be thorough, so not to mention there's a lot of ongoing still.
Yes.
Yeah. Right first, rushed second.
You are just so amazing with the, the statements, you're great with your sayings, they stick. Okay, so we will postpone a vote on those initial executive session minutes, but that does not mean that we do not have others. So the next group of minutes to be approved are regular site meeting minutes from November 12th, 2020, December 3rd, 2020, December 17th, 2020, and January 7th, 2020. So do I hear a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Okay, Anna May, so moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so I'll do a roll call vote, as we always want to do. Leo Brown.
Aye.
And Tim Knight.
Aye.
Megan Glenn.
Aye.
Anna May O'Shea Brook.
Aye.
And Jessica Riley, aye, the motion passes. And then the third tranche is minutes to be approved for the school committee workshops from October 16th, 2020, November 5th, 2020, and December 4th, 2020. So do I hear a motion to approve those?
Moved.
All right, Leo moves, do I have a second?
Second, Anna May.
Okay, and I'll do a roll call again, Leo Brown.
Aye.
And Tim Knight.
Aye.
Megan Glenn.
Aye.
Anna May O'Shea Brook.
Aye.
And Jessica Riley, aye, the motion passes and the minutes are approved. Okay, so the next agenda item that we have is fiscal year 21 budget update. And I'm going to give you the floor, Dr. Marsden, and you can kind of go from there.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So Michael will be giving us an update where we are in FY21. As you know, we've been discussing for almost the entire fiscal year about some of the issues that we have with FY21 in terms of COVID expenses, so we, we continue to peck away at that. And Michael will give you an update here with the screen.
Okay, thank you.
Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right, so just a few things, I believe it was last week, we received notice from the Department of Education that we received, I believe it was $35,000, first installment, $35,000 for COVID PPE expenses. And then we were going to receive a second amount of, same exact amount, $35,000 towards the, I think it was May. We also received or we put in for the second installment of COVID relief, which is under the Title I requirements, we'd receive the $176,000. So that grant, we are finishing up and hopefully submitting tomorrow. And that will cover additional expenses for nurses. We have expenses because we have additional nurses plus the pool testing. We are hiring nurses to come in to help with the pool testing. That's also going to pay for some technologies, software, PPE. And we're going to move some of our paraprofessionals into that line item to cover some of the overages that we are experiencing because of COVID in the personnel side. There is going to be a third wave of COVID relief for the school side. Dr. Marsden got that information the other day when he was on call with the commissioner. That again is going to be a Title I requirement, but the amount that we will receive is going to be higher than the $176,000 that we currently have. We are looking, we have to look at what those requirements are going to be. And if possible, we will also move our overages for personnel due to additional teachers and paraprofessionals into that grant. But as of right now, we don't have that amount, so I, I can't share that amount with you. But I can tell you that if you look at this screen, our budget for personnel is about $30 million. We're at $15,850,000 already spent, which is about 52%. We typically is about 58%. What the line item that you need to look at is that instructional services, within that instructional services, are our teachers and our paraprofessionals. We are over in that line item. That 52% is going to continue to increase as we spend additional funding. For this year, we are averaging about $1.2 million per payroll period. And if we do the calculations, we're looking at, that we probably will be over somewhere between 500,000 to 600,000. Could be a little bit higher depending on if we need additional aids to help us when our students are in for our instructional services line item. We're hoping that that second relief, that third relief that's coming in will help cover some of those overages. On the non-personnel side, we're currently in about 47% of total expenditure, a little bit slightly under of what we are usually at at this point, which is 58%. Our budget is 6.4 million for non-personnel items and we spent about $3 million. And that is because Dr. Marsden and I had a conversation, we froze the budget and we're hoping to take some of that savings to offset some of the personnel increases that we have experienced due to COVID expenses. Any questions?
Not from me right now. I do want to thank you for having been as clear and detailed as you have been over the last several months, I mean, always, but over the last several months in which you've been keeping us up to date on this throughout the meetings and really helping us see the ebbs and flows of what is happening here, we just appreciate that. Does anybody have any financial questions right now, or?
Just want to add one thing, as much... Just want to add one thing. As Michael had said that um, we were notified uh, which isn't great for Medfield that the federal stimulus third time was going to be through the Title One mechanism, which doesn't really help us a lot. It certainly, we get additional funds, which is great. But we don't get the funds that other districts would, would get. I, I guess the frustrating piece that I have, I was talking to Michael about is there's going to be additional funds for districts that haven't spent one day in person yet. Uh, and they're going to probably get ten or fifteen times the amount of money that we're going to get. We, we certainly need it because we're in person. So you know, nothing we can do about that, but the commissioner did say that uh, he understands the frustration uh, around that with many districts like us in this area that do not have a high number uh, in terms of Title One and that the state Desi was going to put aside some of the funding that comes through stimulus to try to help out those districts that don't get enough or as much as others uh, with Title One. So I mean, I think that's going to be maybe an additional fund that we get, but we, there was no clarification or detail on how they were going to determine that, but the way he described it, it sounded a lot like Medfield, so maybe we'll get additional money there as well.
And this always leads us to that discussion, which I'm sure we will cover in the fiscal year twenty two discussion, which is that Medfield is so, is very unique in terms of a lot of communities in that we have to fund almost entirely off of um, off of personal or off of uh, kind of homeowner tax rates, property taxes. So and that we do, we have very few businesses to kind of help us stretch that out while at the same time having a pretty high concentration of kids. So um, that is always the, the balance beam that we, we walk on here. So, all right. Given that, does anybody uh, have any other questions right now about fiscal year twenty one?
I just appreciate Michael, Michael's insight on tracking that progress throughout the year. Um, just watching it unfold. You know, at one point, it seems like, oh, we're about fifty two percent of the year. We're doing all right, you know, but the fact that we're keeping such an eye on that uh, uh, is, is very helpful.
Okay, uh, I'll open that up to public comment then. Uh, and again, remember that a public comment is uh, different than the usual forum that we, or the forum that we had beginning. Uh, we will not be answering questions, but we'll certainly take public comment on the fiscal year twenty one budget right now. Okay, not seeing anybody knocking down the door. I'm sure somebody will tell me as soon as it happens. All right. Um, we will move on to new business at this point, which is the superintendent's establishment of the diversity, equity, and inclusion task force. So, Dr. Morrison, if you'd like to move on to that?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, uh, this, the issues around DEI have been a priority for the district, and we've been working on that for the last few years. Um, and, and one of the things that we realized at a leadership meeting and in, in especially our conversation at Central Office, we feel like the work is being done in, in silos and we're not, you know, we're not together as far as, you know, where we all need to focus our, our energies because we have different pockets of this going on, led by the district and we have professional development, all other things, but we need to kind of bring it all together and, and really move it forward in a way that, that makes some, some change within the district. So at the last merge meeting, the Medfield Educators for Facial, for Racial Justice, I, I did mention this to them and floated the idea of uh, what, what do you think about using the same model that we've used for SEL task force, which has been very successful within our district? How could, using that same model for DEI? So looking at um, diversity, equity, inclusion onto that lens of a task force. And um, it was really well received by that group. They, they thought that it was a, a good idea. So I want to bring it forward to you tonight to talk a little bit about it and, and what I think it, it could do for the district. Looking to appoint a couple of co, uh, co-chairs like we did for um, SEL and then invite students, teachers, parents, community members, uh, school, one school committee member and administrators um, as part of the, the task force to, to keep this work moving forward as a district. I think when I think about what this group might work on, I would think we look at uh, review of the district procedures and curriculum and make recommendations for improvement. Um, and I think at some point it could get to policy, but it, at the initial stages, I don't think it's there yet. It's not at the school committee policy right now. It's more of looking at how we operate day to day as a district and how we can improve that. Continue with our professional development for, for staff, parents, and community. So we focus a lot on staff, and we've done some work with some parents in community, but we need to kind of embrace this as a dis- as a, as a community and kind of continue that professional development all along. I'm really focused on increasing our workforce diversity, uh, which is something that, that we know that uh, if a student of color has um, at least one person that teaches them through their career, uh, the impact of their, their, excuse me, their education, the impact it makes on them uh, for the rest of their life is important. So trying to really increase that workforce diversity. Um, and then one of the things that a, a couple of colleagues and I have talked about is looking at the possibility of a uh, diversity, equity, inclusion director that we could share among two or three districts uh, so that we could have uh, someone that is really uh, focused and expert in that area that can help us out because a lot of places are in the same boat. We are uh, we're doing the work and we're doing it in silos, but we need to put it all together so that it's more comprehensive and focused for the district so that it benefits kids. So I think that's, and, and anything else at the task force that comes out of it organically that they, uh, that they think would be important to work on. Very similar for those of you that have worked on SEL. I know there are some of you here that have worked on SEL where, you know, we've looked at, we looked at things like the homework policy. We looked at uh, the scheduling at the high school. We looked at supporting teachers, supporting social emotional kids, all those things. And that, and we come together as a group, discuss them, break out and work into our individual areas of interest, then come back again together and just continue that model throughout so that there's really improvement in, in forward moving actions that, that people feel like we're, we're going in the right direction instead of everyone doing these different meetings and not really looking at it from a, a district perspective. So I just, I feel like it's a real important thing for us to do, and I'd like to get that going um, in the spring and, and start doing some work over the summer, uh, and then really get it going in the fall as well. So I would just like some feedback of what you think about it. I know I, I've only really floated it to the merge group, so would happy to have any feedback that you folks have on it.
I think this is a natural progression, and this is, this is a must do for us. So I'm very grateful that this is finally happening. So so thank you, because you're right. There are all these little groups, and I think, you know, I think we can all come together to do some, some great work that is desperately needed in our district.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I, it's been interesting to watch, um, working with uh, Dr. Worley and some of the others. You know, SEL becomes a fabric of everything that you're doing in, in the schools as, as that evolves, and that, that I've got to believe is, is the goal.
Absolutely.
I, I mean, I think, I think it's, it's fantastic. I, I am I'm more curious, when you talk about uh, maybe there's part of um, working with some other districts. Like, are you think, who, are you thinking of any specific or, or any? Yeah, I've, I've had conversations uh, with Medway and with Westwood. You know, because we're all, we're all doing, we're all around the same place, give or take, and with this work. And we all value it and think it's really important. Um, so we want to, um, we feel like we're, we're at the stage, we don't have, we're not organized enough to have a director. We want to get ourselves organized first and then get to a place where someone can take us to a really good spot, you know, as far as making it part of our fabric, you know, and, and working with, with teachers and students and families and all the stuff that Dave does for SEL. Apply it now to um, diversity, equity, inclusion, and that would be a, a really good way to do it.
Would anybody else like to speak on that? If Andrea, if, uh, yeah, sorry, Andrew, if you have any uh, thoughts or I know there's not a huge amount of detail right now, but I do think it's important that we are really that we're putting a pin in this very important work that, you know, I've been in silos on, and I know Anime has, and that, you know, like, I can just look at many of us throughout the district who have been really working on this kind of formally and informally, and then uh, the idea that we can finally bring people together and really start to structure how we can move this forward. And, and the fact that we are thinking about it and are still placing, that we haven't lost it because of the, the kind of constant hair on fire problems of uh, being in the pandemic. I appreciate, so.
I don't have any specific thoughts right now um, about this particular issue, but I do know that it's um, something that's very important. I'm a member of project teamwork as well, which is like a group from the high school that goes down to the middle school and talks about like anti-bullying and the power of the bystander. But today we're having a conversation about how we want to expand our curriculum kind of into more um, like, for eighth graders particularly, like navigating um, high school and diversity awareness and, and inclusion um, and social media and all that stuff, kind of compiling that on top of bullying and uh, the power of bystanders. So um, we're, we're having that conversation and outside of the administration itself. So I think it's important that it's happening in many places, but it's exciting to hear that progress is being made.
And we will be absolutely, totally, utterly imperfect throughout all of this. I think that that's incredibly important to emphasize constantly and that we will, we will mess up as we do every day through any part of our lives, but I think that the doing our best to uh, mess up and then own up and then move forward in a way that shows the power of, of community, I think is important. I, um, if anybody else
Two comments. Uh, one, I was in a couple of Nat Von's uh, pin nights this week, and it sounds like s- some of this sounds familiar. We are not, you know, we will not do it right, so that's a, a later, a later moment. Um, I would just say though, there was an awkward silence as I asked my question. And you know, Jeff, when we think about, uh, you know, maybe it's Westwood and Medway, some others. If, if it's purely sharing funding, totally makes sense. The nature of the committee, if it's like, hey, we're going to be collaborating with some other districts, you, you would want to think we, we would be also collaborating with um, either those that have gone through it or, or is a more diver- there is more diversity in our partners that, that we're going after. And, and again, that's, I'll, I'll use Jess's term, stick a pin in it. But just, just something that kind of like, it was in the back of my head, I debated on saying it, but just something that kind of thinks, you know, when, when I think about that, it's, some have gone through it, some are further along leverage. And just the nature of it, the, you know, we, there, there are other, other districts that are more diverse than Medfield. That's for sure. They can, they can teach us a heck of a lot. And I would say, we, so we just, to your example, Tim, uh, after we hired a um, SEL coordinator to run our, with Dr. Worley to, to, to coordinate that district wide and to run our RISE program. Um, I know Medway um, had a, had a similar program years ago and then started that again. And you know, Dr. Worley and, and their person over there communicate all the time, do job alikes. Um, and, and they partnered even our challenge success night that we had earlier uh, this year, and that was put on in conjunction with Medway and Medfield as far as their collaboration. So I, I see this as a great opportunity to kind of expand the conversation beyond Medfield. Um, and also um, share resources with that and, and, and share whether it's professional development with teachers, all of that. And I think it's just a really important piece to, to expand this again beyond the walls of Medfield.
Yeah, I want, I echo what Anime and Tim both said. It just seems like a, an obvious progression to, to, to make this into sort of a task force similar to SEL and that the discussions then become ingrained in everything we do moving forward. Because they're, obviously, they're, they're just that important. And um, I know that the work is being done, but this is a, a great way to organize and to um, to kind of move forward from here. So I, I'm full support of this. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Um, you know, I, I do want to make sure that uh, so I am going to open this up to public comment, but I, I want to make sure that, that we're bringing back Ms., I'm sorry, I'm going to find you right now. Um, if you would like to make your comment that you made previously, or if there's some more that you would like to add to that, Ms. Ramika. Um, when you made your comment earlier, I just want to invite you and let you know that you, you are welcome to do so. And if anybody else has any other public uh, input on this, please let me know. All right, so I'm going to let Ms. uh, Ramika uh, have her come over first. And then uh, we will move on to Christine McQ Potts, and then we'll go from there. All right, so Ms. Ramika.
Hi, my main concern is that I'm a parent of uh, twelve year olds, and the definition of racism that the M E R J provided, I feel like it, it, it was, it's a mar- marginalization and oppression of people of color based on socially constructed racial hierarchy that privileges white people. And I don't, that is not consistent with that of the Webster dictionary. And there's also things about white privilege, and I just, I'm having a hard time trying to relate that to a twelve year old that doesn't in fact see color. And I, I'm just having, do the parents get a say in what the M E R J is teaching to our children that are eleven and twelve and thirteen years old?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ramika. I, again, this is in the nascent kind of stages. And far more information will come out, but uh, we take public input now and public comment, and then we apply it to the future. So we hear uh, what you are saying. So thank you very much. Ms. McQ Potts, please, Chris, if you'd like to come over and uh, give us your name and your address.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Chris, you have the floor?
Yep, so Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. Um, having been involved with the school district for a very long time. Um, I've been on the elementary school day committee. Um, I was involved with the uh, initial stages of, of SEL. Um, and I've seen, you know, very, I've been on search committees, and I've seen, you know, the formation of other groups like the Mascot Group. Through all these different committees that we've had um, for the school district, there really hasn't been any kind of structure or protocol that lays out what the appointment process looks like for these committees. Um, what these, the, the, the overall uh, structure of these committees would be, the expectations um, in terms of reports back to school committee, um, posting of minutes, uh, maybe providing some public sessions. So people can actually um, sit in and find out how things are going, providing a membership list. Um, you know, I'm very passionate about the social emotional learning, and I'm disappointed that I can't twenty twenty minutes or you can't find them on the website. Um, there's, then there's a note there that says twenty twenty one is to come, but you can't even find the twenty twenty minutes. So I just think that it's, would be very helpful for, for school committee before this task force gets formed to create some kind of a policy or protocol that actually lays out what the appointment process is, how it's going to be structured, and what the goals and objectives of the task force are going to be, and how the community is going to be kept up to date on the progress of it.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Are you, um, is that your comment?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. Uh, I see that Andrea Small would like to come over. Hi, Andrea. You have the floor, whenever you uh, whenever you can. There you go. Hi. Oh, unmute. Can't hear you. There you go. I'm going to have to figure out a better sign for that at some point, or maybe I'll never have to. Okay.
I think I'd figure that out. I know. Um, I simply wanted to say thank you. I am impressed by the SEL work that the district is doing in conjunction with the other districts. Um, I was curious to know what the DEI work was across the district when I first moved here a couple of years ago and was interested to find out. There wasn't one yet coordinated, um, but a lot of efforts that were already underway. So I'm really excited to see this work get started in a more coordinated way and looking forward to seeing what you guys are able to do. I just wanted to say thank you, and the time couldn't be better. So thanks for making it a priority.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate it very much. Okay, uh, do I have any other comments specifically on uh, the uh, DEI? We, we will now know DEI, I think, uh, the way we know SEL. the D E I? We will now know D E I, I think, the way we know S E L as a set of initials that, that represent kind of how we try to weave things through the district. I do think that that's an important part of SEL is that we think about that all the time now. And that was maybe not exactly as, as known to be ingrained three or four years ago when we started the SEL task force. So there's certainly a lot of, there's a lot of upside there. Okay. I do not see anybody else coming over for the D E I task force. So if we could, Michael, I think you'd like to, the next agenda item is the review of the end of year financial report audit from Powers and Sullivan.
Yes. So the auditor was here. He was here in February. He was here for two days. They audited our end of year report, which they do every single year. We got the report back early this week. There was no findings on the report. And we are now reporting it to the school committee. I believe you all got a copy of that final report. And then you also should receive, should have received the copy of the town's audit. So there was a management letter also on the town's audit that you guys should have received a copy of also.
Okay. All right. Any, any other additional comments around that at all?
Great work, Michael. I mean, that takes a lot not to get findings each year, year in, year out. So nice work.
Thanks.
Very detail oriented. Thank you.
Yeah, usually at least one thing. I always thought that that was just part of their MO to always have at least one thing. So I was looking for whatever it was. So.
I'm sorry, Leo. Anybody else on the committee have any comments around that? Any input before I open to a public comment? No? Okay. If anybody has anything that they would like to make a public comment regarding the end of your financial report audit. Wait a few seconds. And the next thing we'll move on to is additions to the school committee meeting calendar, because I just can't get enough of you guys. No? Okay. So let's move on to that. Dr. Morrison and I were talking about kind of the school committee workload and the things we need to kind of fit in and the decisions we may need to end kind of making or weighing in on in April. As well as wanting to give Dr. Powers her kind of the due amount of time that she should have to be able to talk to us about the standards based reporting findings and data collection that she did last year. So I'd like to propose adding two meetings. I know, I know you guys are excited about this. So the first one would be a regular school committee meeting, an additional one on April 15th. So which is our regular Thursday meeting at 7:00 PM. And then we would add a workshop for Dr. Powers to present her research on the standard based reporting pilot at Blake, and that would be on April 16th at 10:00 AM. So we don't need to vote to add the workshop, but we have made kind of a tradition of adding or voting to add to the regular public meetings of the school committee. So with, if there is no objection to either one of those meetings or don't have any specific input about those dates, does anybody have a motion to add April 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM to the regular meeting schedule of the school committee? So moved. All right, Anime. So moves. Do I have a second? Megan, a second? Okay. So Andrew, do you have a new calendar? So I'm going to do a roll call. Leo Brem.
Hi.
Okay, Tim Knight.
Hi.
And Megan Glenn. Anime O'Shea Brook.
Hi.
And Jessica Riley. I. So we have voted that April 15th, 2021, 7:00 PM regular meeting in. And then please just make a note of the April 16th, 2021 at 10:00 AM for Dr. Powers' presentation on SBR. Okay. So now I would move on to other items since posting on March 9th, 2021 under new business. Anybody have any announcements? Anything?
I have no matter, Chair.
Okay. All right. So now we are on to old business. Which is always important. So Dr. Marston and Michael, if you would like to give us an update on fiscal year 22 budget as well as Megan, please update. Megan, if you have anything to weigh in on or Anime.
So I'll just, I'll start and they can jump in if they need to. At the last, we got an email this weekend, I forget when it was, Monday or Tuesday. Probably Tuesday after the warrant committee meeting on Monday that they're looking to reduce the budget again in possibly reducing our budget by a full 1%. So we had a 3.99% increase. So that would bring us down to a 2.99. So we're still, you know, working through that and hopefully we can have a conversation at some point about that. But Michael, do you, did you have the amount that was, was it 300?
It's approximately 380,000.
380. So that was, we're looking at a reduction of 380. I think the gap right now on the town's overall budget is about 421. So I think that's where they're at. And so we make up 380 of that apparently. So that's, that's where we are right now is just they're looking at us to make those reductions. And I think, you know, we, it's like Groundhog Day. We've seen how this movie ends, right? It's, it's, we have 80 plus percent of our budget staffing and we need to make some reductions in staffing. So I think that's where we look to and see what we can go from there. But we will look at any direction that you guys have that you want us to go through before the April 1st meeting where you would like us to see, take a look at reductions again, any areas in terms of staffing or any non personnel items you'd like us to go through. We will certainly be happy to do that. If you don't have one now, you can tell Anime and Megan and they can, you know, let us know as well.
Yeah. I think it's going to be pretty hard to find non personnel costs at this point. We are we are running so close to the bone from where we were even last year. When we had to make those kind of draconian cuts that and it's not like we've added anything in that's particularly exotic.
I'm sorry. If you remember last year, we made 10% reduction.
Oh, I remember.
Non personnel lines, just on non personnel lines, right? So then we level funded that this year. So it's, it's like having additional cut right from the start because we chopped off the 10% last year.
And given the amount of support that we can all anticipate our kids will need. And that's our population will likely rebound, certainly to some extent. We did not lose that many kids this year. Obviously, all of this is very critical for us to look at.
Yeah. Running that tight, the only thing you can target is, is programmatic items. And that's, and that's the real issue. Cause once you thin out a program, then you lose it. So that's and that's, you know, our programming is extremely important, you know, across the board. So that's Jeff, is there any, and I may have asked this in the past and I apologize, on Circuit Breaker, I'm assuming that is a, that's gone, right? Or from the state or opportunity for buy ahead, I guess, for next year that might be able to offset some of this. That's all.
Yeah. So at this point, we're not, we're not planning on doing that right now because of our deficit and FY21. Our goal right now is to close that deficit down so that it's zero. I mean, that's our goal to be at zero so that we're not at town meeting asking for additional, additional funds. So if you remember, when we started this conversation months ago, we were at about 1.2 million projection over and we continue to whittle that down. So, you know, the additional stimulus money could help us out. But again, it's not going to be what other places are going to get. So it may be enough to knock off a few, few, you know, thousand dollars, but it's not going to be a windfall for any means for us. So the other piece on that is that typically on that federal grant, when you get the stimulus, which a lot of the districts that are getting lots of money are doing is that they're only accessing parts of it for this year and they'll save it for FY22. So they'll be able to offset, you know, we don't know yet whether this is going to be allowed to be offset FY22 and FY23. We don't have all these particulars on that now. But if you're a district, I'll see like Framingham, for instance, which will get a lot of money out of this and got a lot out of S R 1 and S R 2. I mean, you're, you can, you can put that money away for the rainy day. And you don't have to offset your budget because you got so much of it where we're going to have to spend it right away or attempt to offset a little bit for FY22. But again, as people always say, no one feels bad about Medfield except Medfield with these.
I thought that was my quote.
Yeah, that's your quote.
Nobody feels bad for Medfield.
No, you know, that no one's going to feel bad for us at the federal state level. So you just have to work within those confines and figure it out.
So no one likes to pay extra fees, but are we going to have the discussion of, you know, bus fees, tech fees, or something to kind of take the edge off perhaps?
I, I know that we had thought about having, as we were constructing this conversation, this agenda this week, we had thought about whether we would bring that up this week, but I really feel like that is a discussion. And one of the reasons that we added another meeting is that that's a discussion that really deserves the time and the thought and the data behind it before and not get squeezed into, into this night where we knew that we wanted to be able to kind of talk about reentry. But we will have a conversation about that. But I do think that it needs to be kind of grounded in what our community has also gone through for the last year and the stresses that have been put there. And if we aren't necessarily looking at reductions in labor force over the time where we've rebounded to how many families have lost one of their earners to be able to manage school and what that looks like. So I've actually been working with Sarah Reposa, trying to kind of dig out some of that data so that we can have a really good informed conversation about it, you know, I, so, so I think that that's that will probably be a part of our next kind of budget update. You know?
So Anime, are you thinking that we'll, one day, we gave you that preliminary data on some of the tech fees and bus fees in the area. Is there anything else that you're thinking of?
No, that, I mean, really that's, those are the two things that I thought we were going to, you know, at some point have a thoughtful discussion. I mean, I know full well of people suffering for sure, but, but it still warrants a conversation.
Absolutely.
And, and especially with the deficit and you know, I just think we just have to be responsible and have that conversation.
Can we put that in for the first?
Yeah, it's fine with me. I, I think that we, as we were talking about it, we just wanted to make sure that we were giving it as much airtime as it needs. Right? Because it would be a new, it would be new and there is a likelihood that it would be. It's not like you ever stop using them, right? So, you know, like, we need to be very thoughtful about, about how.
No one's disputing that.
I try to make sure that we just have the airtime for it. So, but it's not a forgotten conversation.
It'd be helpful to have a refresher on what, for Michael and the projections on on just how much we would save, like at certain levels of fees too, you know, perhaps we ease into it on the taking off the edge, right? To see just how much money we're talking about saving here, right? You know, through all that, through the bus fees. And the other thing is Chatera has her hand up.
I know, but she'll get to probably comment in a second because I'd like us to be able to kind of talk through this, but if we, like I said, I just really want to make sure that this is a conversation that we have that's kind of not like, where do we find the money? But how do we find the money and how do we and how do we make sure that we're making the best decision we can long term? And that's the only discussion I want to have, whether, no matter where we end up, but I want to make sure that we're not just kind of that we're really spending the time on it. And that's just not something that we thought we had tonight. So.
Right. No, I just, I was under the impression that we did have it. So it's, it's my fault, you know, for assuming that because anyways.
From the last time, we had data around it, but we tabled it. What was it? Two, two meetings ago? Or last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. But we did not move it to, or I'm sorry, we postponed it, but we didn't move it to this meeting. We just moved it to, you know, a time in the future when we were able to.
It's, you know, it's just, I think every cycle, we've had discussions about bus fees kind of, you know, and I know, but I think again, you know, we're just we're in a difficult position. And I think we just, just as I said, need to have the discussion.
We will. Um, I just don't want to have it right now because I want to make sure that we're prepared to do so.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, the stimulus money is the money that's part of the package that Biden is supposedly signing into law tomorrow, correct? Yes. So it's fairly eminently coming.
Right.
Right. And is if there is a, some money coming to the town side as well?
Correct.
Okay. Is that doled out by the same formula?
No, no.
Okay. So, and I'm not trying to get ahead of anything, but should they come into some money that obviously plays into decisions that we have to make as well?
They will definitely come into some money.
Okay. So I do, I agree with Anime, we need to have these conversations. I just, I'm just saying it's like we're, we have a moving target here and I feel like it wouldn't be prudent if we rushed into these decisions and had these talks about cuts and programs that we wanted to to hack until we really fully know the situation that we're in. That's, you know, I'm all for, for doing the hard work and having the hard conversations, but I just don't, I don't see that. I think it's, it would be a waste to delve into that right now without knowing really what our end needs to be.
Yeah. To that point, Megan, if you remember months ago, when all this was coming down, we had the conversation about moving the date when we had to submit our budget to the town. For this very reason, if you remember correctly, I brought that issue up because we knew this is going to be waves of stimulus. And now here we are again, right? We're trying to make decisions when you know, we should find out, I bet by Monday or Tuesday, what the number is.
Okay. So is this simply trying to set so they can print a warrant before the town meeting? Is that?
Well, the town meeting is actually going to be extended out by a couple of weeks. And from what I understand, although I didn't watch the selectmen's meeting.
It's like May 17th.
It is.
But we are looking at two nights, right?
Right. 17th and 18th.
Because there's a lot there. So, you know.
I could just add too, when we had that conversation on the first, I wondered if we could discuss, because Megan and I had a conversation about it earlier this week, adding the late bus for middle, high school as part of that fee. So we could drive, do something around that so that we could have one or two or whatever late buses that would help our kids out in middle school and, and in high school, especially middle where there may not be a license obviously at middle school. And if kids want to stay after for extra help or activities or whatever, they could, they could hop on that late bus. So if we could include that in the conversation, that'd be helpful.
I think that those are, yeah, I mean, I think those are important context. Important kind of things to kind of bring in. So let's say that we will have that discussion in April 1st that, you know, whatever updates we would like to see from Michael in terms of the data he's been able to collect. Please feed that to him, what you'd like to see and come and let's have our, our ideas around what we would want to accomplish with both technology fees and the bus fees. So, okay. Would it be all right with the rest of the committee if I opened this up to public comment now? Cause I do know that Sharon's been waiting very very patiently. Is that all right? Okay. Sharon. And for those of who are watching who don't know, Sharon is the head of the warrant committee in town. So. All of you.
Sorry.
Found a half million dollars for us. Thank you, Sharon.
I did, I did. That's a separate conversation. I just wanted to join just from a timing clarification perspective.
Okay.
So you are correct that the town meeting is on the, whatever it is, 16, 17, 17, 18th of May. But the warrant.
Late and dark.
Yes, exactly. But the warrant hearing is on April 1st?
Oh, we have a meeting on that night.
Well, okay. So here's what happened. Ours is on the first. So on Monday at our meeting, we had been told that the town meeting was being moved to mid-May. we had been told that the um, town meeting was being moved to mid-May. So, hearing was scheduled for April first, which is, we had to have the balanced budget by April first, because that's the warrant hearing, and we go to print for the town almost immediately the day after. So I would like to respectfully request that if you guys want to have a discussion about fees or need to vote on a revised budget, that you may need to add a meeting for April first.
So this is a printing issue, that was my.
Printing issue, yes, because you have to get the actual booklets to the town.
I know, I know, but I'd rather get it right. Like, like, go, go back to Tim's statement, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a printing issue, so um, I mean, if you have your meeting on the first, like, we won't have been able to vote on it, so we had tentatively tried to schedule our date to vote on it, March twenty-fifth, um, so that that way there would be like a week of leeway. So, if you aren't going to, if you want to discuss fees and you're not going to do it tonight, I just wanted to suggest that I know you guys already meet a tremendous amount and you've already scheduled meetings for later in April, but if you're not going to do it tonight, I just think that it might be be yourselves to schedule something next week or the week after. Um, and um, because I know that we are going to try to, you know, meet with Jeff and Michael and Megan and Anime to try to work out some kind of balanced budget that everyone can be happy with. We're going to try to do that next week, so that that way we would have a balanced budget to talk about on the twenty-fifth, so.
Uh, Dr. Marston, all right, so we'll uh, maybe look at our calendars and figure out what we can, what we can do and try to work out.
Sharon, did you say you were meeting on the twenty-fifth?
We, we are meeting twice a week for the next two weeks, because it's so much fun this time of year, when you.
Apparently, we are too.
Well, yeah, because when you get all the warrant articles this past Monday and you have forty-six of them to do within a three-week period, it's a little.
Yeah, yeah.
So we are meeting next week on Monday and Thursday, and the week after on Monday and Thursday.
Okay, that was in the email you sent me, right? So I have the dates?
You do, yeah, and so our hope was to vote on a balanced budget on the twenty-fifth, because that would give us the most time. Um, if we have to have a meeting before April first, then next week, it would either be on Tuesday or Wednesday, because there's the, the town election is on Monday and I volunteer for too many things and happen to be the tabulator, so I have to be over at the election on Monday, so the warrant committee is not meeting that day. Um, and I would prefer not to meet on Tuesday, the um, I guess it's the thirtieth of March, I'd prefer not to do that, because then we would lose. I don't want to do the operating budget that night, because a selectman's meeting last night, that night, and we lose Christine.
All right.
We did it on Wednesday, the thirty-first, that gives us twenty-four hours to scramble if we're all not agreeing, which is why hoping to do it on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
All right.
Might have an idea run by you that maybe we'll make it so that we could do that.
All right, thank you, Sharon, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, well, who thought they were gonna get a night off? All right.
Would it be in an interesting process if we did some sort of um, like, stage discussion, you know, in terms of I know Michael shared um, the spreadsheets with, you know, comparing other towns and whatnot, but maybe doing like a deep dive and then a reflection bit, and then have a meeting where we make some decisions either way?
So, eh, oh, a workshop?
I know, it's just like.
But no.
That's two meetings, right?
I know, but eh, eh, you know, to your point, Jess, we.
It's important enough.
We have to honor these conversations, right?
Yeah, I just, it's, we can't, eh, eh, you know, we just, it has to, as you say, be thoughtful and kind of.
I guess I, I would recommend for this particular one, though, be in a, the, you know, like um, and late afternoon, early evening, perhaps, um, so that folks can hear this conversation. I feel like it's gonna be an important one.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I've heard some bus, I've heard, I've heard some feedback on bus fees already, and I just feel like, you know, it's, it's like you said, both of you have mentioned, it's, um, you know, uh, outside of the folks that, you know, you know, we do have a core, we can't, you know, charge certain folks, but there's a margin of folks this year that are very close to that line, or they're just above, or where this is actually gonna make a difference. Um, and so it will have that impact. So I think, you know, being, having, it'll be very thoughtful to have that conversation um, and have people uh, be able to hear, you know, the, our perspectives and hear the, the deliberation, I guess, so.
Okay, um, so uh, do I have any other comments from the committee right now, or can I open this to public comment? And again, public comment will be uh, just reflections on our conversation and input, but we will not be sharing back and forth on this one. I'm gonna slowly say no until somebody says, uh, there's a hand raised, which seems to be what happens every time. Okay, uh, can we move to the Dale, I'm sorry, to the elementary street pro- uh, elementary school project? Sorry, we had it down here, it's Dale Street Project, but the elementary school project. Um, Jeff, Anime, Leo, if you want to kind of give us your input and updates? Anyone?
We had a, uh, we can cover some, but I guess we had a meeting yesterday, um.
I watched it, it was fascinating.
It was an awesome meeting, I.
It was an awesome meeting.
It was.
Good. There's so many nuances, it's, it's, it was an eye-opener.
Yeah. Yep, about the, you know, there's, there's been a lot of discussion on the building and the site placements itself, right, you know, about how to conserve on space, uh, reviewing in the gymnasiums, um, so that we're not building a gymnasium that's too small and one that's big enough to allow um, different groups to use the space. So uh, that's been, because the gym, um, the square footage that the MSBA will reimburse us for, I believe, is six thousand square feet, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff? And then, um, but what we really need is something, you know, closer to eight thousand square feet, so you know, just how they can tweak the numbers so that we can maximize, um, you know, get the square footage down to be more cost-effective, uh, but still get um, the space so that, you know, maybe, you know, even our older children, the middle schoolers could actually play their size children without, uh, I guess what they're calling it, run into the end zone and be hitting the wall, uh, so the, the runway of the end zone, so. And so, and it's very thoughtful, right? That's why they put pads on, on the walls, so, um, uh, but at the same time, being able to have a functional uh, space for Steve to, um, Steve Granham to run a school with um, you know, two gym classes running at the same time and so on, so, and allow parents to watch, right? And right now, in the, in the, at least the Wheelock Gym, where I've, I've been in, you um, and then Dale, the Dale Gym, you got a nice area to watch, but in the Wheelock one, you're up against that wall and you could get hit by a ball pretty easily.
I have spent many hours pinned up against the wall at Wheelock.
Exactly. So, uh, so that was a very interesting conversation, um, and then uh, about moving some of the programming around to, to maximize square footage as well, so that we can keep an eye on um, keep an eye on costs, uh, that, and um, the, there was some discussion around um, the different costs around the energy uh, options and um, yeah.
So, I mean, a lot of this, you know, it's so interesting that um, that so many of the kind of environmental concerns that people have had and that I, I think there's been some really thoughtful research when people put these ideas out around, you know, our water, you know, like whether this will contaminate our water or whatever, and the fact that um, the committee is kind of going back and double and triple checking just to make sure that these are not concerns that we need to kind of continue to carry. And hopefully trying to put them to bed so that we can really focus on what's, uh, the, the educational plan part, certainly for our concern, that in the end, this is, this building isn't a, a metaphor for, you know, like tradition or keeping things the same, or, you know, or how much our town will grow or whatever, but in the end, this building must meet an educational plan that is considered for the betterment of our kids for the length of time that we will keep it, which is easily at a minimum fifty years. We don't give up buildings easily.
Right.
Around here. Sometimes it is so hard to stay focused on that.
That's exactly what the.
You guys are working so hard to do.
Yeah, the MSBA is adamant on that fifty-year thing. Build this for fifty years, and, you know, there's a lot of, um, you, when you think about, you know, the size and you know, in the conversation about our enrollment, um, you know, if our enrollment is to drop, uh, you know, and go in the other direction, um, this building plan could, you know, feasibly hold three grades, right? You know, in, eh, eh, possibly. Um, but the idea that uh, we could have that campus style uh, uh, ability to have those transitions get lowered a little bit is so important. Um, and I've been hearing that feedback over and over again. Um, so I think that part is extremely important around that fifty-year thing. Um, because every time, every, every year that ticks by that you don't build on a building, it's just the squip, the cost per square foot just goes up. So, um, and I, and I just, I've seen it happen, you know, in one of my towns I worked in, we, we did not pass a middle school project um, for uh, twenty-four million, and then three years later, we did, and it was forty-eight million. So, you know, it's a real issue. You know, and I think that was in extenuating circumstances. We built it a little bigger, but it was a much bigger project, and I think um, we've done so much work into this and there's been a lot of research, and the one other comment I can say is about the expertise that sits on the standing building committee is amazing, and the background that those folks have in this industry. I don't know how, why, for whatever reason, they all live in Medfield and all feel like they're gonna, they can give their time. Uh, but that group of folks uh, really know what they're talking about, so. Um, the one other thing we did talk about, and I know it's a, it's a big concern for the project, is the traffic. There was a lot of conversation on the traffic patterns about getting in and off the site. Um, you know, in the buses and then down to where Elm hits South Street. And so, uh, you know, because we're not completely aware of what it's gonna look like, uh, obviously, we still have the same number of buses going to you know, going to the same number of schools, because we're not really changing that, so the same number of buses will still show up at all the schools like they do today. Um, but the drop-offs might be a little different, because we have um, you know, the same site for the drop-offs, where we have two drop-off sites today for Dale and Memorial. So, it'll be interesting to see, uh, to see that, but I, you know, um, again, it's a small window of time in the morning. Uh, but they've got some pretty, uh, pretty good ideas on how they could start with stop signs, you know, give some turning lanes to allow traffic to really move through there, so.
I'm kind of progressively thinking about traffic, so that uh, you don't end up throwing a whole lot of resources at one solution, but really starting and seeing what, what the best kind of least intrusive solution is, and then leveling up if it needs to happen.
Right, yeah.
Conversations that I heard that how measured their.
Very thoughtful, yeah, very thoughtful plan, and that.
Dr. Marston or Anime, do you have any uh, other?
I, I just want to mention that the project has a new name.
And yes, thank you, I, I stumbled over that one.
Project, and so the website has been updated, our logo has been updated, the very talented and generous um, woman in town, Janie Boylan, designed a new logo for us, so um, gosh, she is very generous with her time, I'm very grateful to her. Um, but one other thing I wanted to point out is that um, what Leo said was you know, the expertise on the committee, and even last night, the thoughtful questions, and in terms of, you know, we need a building, but we, but we also need to keep costs down, and how mindful they are of that, and um, um, you know, Tim Von, Von Fadi, for example, just, you know, he knows his stuff, so he was.
Being able to just arc, architect. That whole plan apart and look at it ways that I would never have been able to, but it's like, this is where you save, this is where you save, this is where you.
Yeah, it's so fortunate to have, you know, to have these talented individuals who volunteer their time, I'm just very, very grateful.
Well, and I also want to say, Mike Mancucci has got a really, a, a good approach around of the future thinking of this too, you know, build a building that's gonna be for what we need. Uh, don't underbuild it if we're gonna bother to do this, because, you know, um, if we miraculously shrink in size, um, you know, now we have a really good building to center a, a lot more kids in, right? And we could maybe stop supporting another building, um, something along those lines, but if you underbuild it now, um, then you're gonna, no matter what happens, you're gonna have to maintain extra space. So, um, eh, eh, it's just that kind of, you know, um, future thinking, the strategic planning and the thinking that's extreme, extremely important in order for the success of the town, so that twenty years from now, uh, they're not looking back and saying, what were these people thinking and what they built, so. Um, I think it's really important, so.
Dr. Marston, I, I noticed that you were wanting to, you know, or maybe I was wrong, that you wanted to kind of contribute to the discussion there, and.
Yeah, I think they, they covered it, I just, you know, one of the thi- the big decisions that we're gonna have to make as a school building committee is, is the project management, um, whether we're gonna have um, uh, C M R or um, design, design, build, and that's gonna be, you know, a difference of whether or not we start in September twenty twenty-four or September twenty twenty-five, so I think, you know, we've had some delays that we've done, each one of these delays for various reasons, um, has really put us in a situation where um, twenty twenty-four might not be avail- might not, might not happen for us, so have to just keep a close check on the timeline and, and see how we, you know, how we proceed with, with that, but I think the, the school building committee, again, I mean, you have all people in this business on that committee, so um, it's, it's really, really important for, for us to lean on them for their expertise and, and see what they think is the best way to go in this, but um, the, the additional, you know, certainly we stalled for, for COVID, we had to do that, that made the most sense on, on that area, but I do know of other projects in other communities that did not in our full steam ahead, so um, it's just, we just need to understand that those, the stoppages have consequences and it, in delays, every time we delay a budget, as Leo said, there, there could be increases in, in the, in the project, so.
Uh, that, that increase is real, the construction increase, yeah, absolutely.
That out there, that. No, I'm not judging either way, whether we go with C M R or design bid build, I mean, either way.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not really, because, you know.
Oh, I, I.
And this wouldn't be the place to.
Yeah, so. That's just a, that's just a decision that needs to be made, you know, a lot will determine whether we get it in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, that's all.
Okay. Um, all right, so uh, given that update, I'm going to open this for public comment. If anybody would like to come over. Again, I'm not doing an exchange. All right. Um, and then townwide master plan update, which is mine, um, and it will be very brief. Uh, so for the last eighteen months or so, uh, we have, I've been part of a, a pretty extensive committee that's been working on the townwide master plan, and if you remember before the pandemic in the fall, and then through virtual meetings over the last year, we've been collecting data on um, really just a, a very large range of issues that affect the town and how we kind of plan for the next twenty years for Medfield, because we are kind of having this little bit of a busting at the seams kind of issue, you know, any, eh, anytime I've actually talked about this plan, it's been, the first thing people say is, and what are you gonna do about one oh nine? Or what are you going to do about this? What are you gonna do about that? There's a very thoughtful plan out there now that is completed, that the selectman would like a few tweaks to, or, you know, um, and we're looking at, at that, but really, at this point, we're also looking at um, how do we make sure that this plan never just ends up in a binder on a shelf? And um, to that end, uh, unless, of course, I have to meet with you guys on uh, Thursday, March twenty-fifth, um, we will be meeting as the townwide master plan uh, committee, probably for one of our last meetings, to really understand what the implementation portion of this will be, giving kind of thoughts and ideas around how, how we monitor, how we make sure that this mean, remains a, an active plan and how we kind of interweave it through um, through all of the things that we do as a town, uh, much like our strategic plan has been kind of the the hallmark of, or the kind of the, the lodestone of what we do over, you know, throughout the district over the last five years. Um, so I did include the townwide master plan and uh, its addendums in, in the packet as well as an implementation kind of graphic um, around who does what, how and when. And um, I'm happy to. around who does what, how and when. And I'm happy to, you know, kind of flush that conversation out in some way, but we really just kind of, Michael and Jeff were asked to have input into kind of where they saw concerns or ways that, that we could kind of implement this in a way that's active and ongoing. So, but I just wanted to let you know that that, that particular part of that committee is winding down. And I think they're going to start looking for, depending on what the decisions are, they're going to start looking for people to kind of be a longer term, less intensive group to be able to do implementation of the plan so that it is not just kind of wasted effort. So that's my update. If anybody has anything to say about it, or, you know, it's simply kind of an informational item at this point. I do think that one of the greatest parts about it is that I got to spend an entire four lunch periods before everything went to heck in the high school and literally just round robin talk to kids within the high school about what they wanted to see in their town. And I think that the, the people who did it were really invested in making sure that a lot of that input was, was honored and valued in there. So read it especially.
Say, Jess, thanks for serving on that. I mean, that was a huge time commitment as well.
I feel as though.
And everything. But anyways, thank you.
Thanks. I know that there are other people who also worked even harder because sometimes, you know, our, our meetings and the pandemic ended up kind of impinging on a lot of that. But the committee itself did a fantastic job. I really do think so. So, okay. Any other input?
I would say, Jess, thanks. Again, thanks for being on that because I got a copy of it and been going through it. The, the committee did a great job with that. I just want to recognize Sarah Repose of the town planner who did a really wonderful job organizing all that and all the work that she did. But there's some really, really good ideas in there and a good plan set forward for the town going forward.
I certainly hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I certainly hope so. But no plan works unless we can put it into action, right? So that's our next, that's our next task. And that has to be as of equal importance as actually compiling all of this. So if anybody has any public input about the townwide master plan itself, I am open to that. I'm not going to spend a huge amount of time on it, but you're certainly welcome to, to comment on it in terms of how the school committee has been involved in it. All right. So that is a the end of our old business. I'm going to move on to informational items.
We do have the calendar, Jess.
Oh my gosh, I knew. I am so sorry. Thank you so much. All right. Yeah, I would have been, I would have not been popular if I forgot the calendar. Okay. We do have the 2021, 2022 school calendar, second draft. This will be a vote for the committee and the revised draft was in your packet. So if anybody had any notes on it in specific, if you want to reflect them to Dr. Marston now that you, if you haven't yet.
What, can you tell me what was revised?
So, Rosh Hashanah was added on the correct day.
Oh, well, that's. So we have a four day Rosh Hashanah Labor Day weekend.
Rosh Hashanah was on the wrong, was on the wrong day before. And one of the things that we did, and I know there was suggestion around making it, making release days consistent per month. And after meeting with the leadership team around that, there were just concerns around kids missing the same thing every time. The high school won't be an issue going forward because they're going to have a rotating schedule. But the other schools, it would really be, you know, kids would miss the same class and it was related art or special the same time. So we want, we wanted to move that around like we, we have in the past and try that out again, because we feel that's probably the fair way to go for kids. So.
Yes, I just have one issue. And if no one agrees with it, we can just let it go. But the April professional development day falls on a week that's already got a day off for Good Friday. And then we got a week of break. It just seems like to go back on that Thursday, I think that parents are just going to say, oh, well, we're off Wednesday and Friday, you know, I, I just kind of de-emphasizes Thursday. I don't know if that can be moved up a week or back a week. Or anybody else think the same thing? Or that's just the only thing I caught.
Glad you caught it. I like it. I like, I mean, I didn't catch it, but it seemed like a worthwhile.
Or is it intentional? People can't.
Potential, but I think, you know, what we're trying to do is, is get consistency with instruction, right? So that, that week already had a day that was there. So that week is doesn't have five days consistency. So if we put it up a week, then you're breaking up that, the week of the fourth. If you put up another week, let's say, you know, the week of the 28th, and you're breaking up that week, and then you have two other weeks that are broken up with release days up there. It's just trying to get the, the most amount of days of five straight instructional days you can. I mean, I'm happy to move it. I just, that's just kind of the rationale behind it.
No, I mean, it makes sense. And I know that I had, I I had asked, you know, kind of how things could be rearranged. And it's clear to me that you, you really did look at that. Cause I had kind of thought of that as, as well.
Happy to move.
Like the 11th.
I was going to say either the Monday or the Tuesday even would be better. Just.
Would be, yeah. We can move one of those.
A plan of my 10 day. I'm on, I'm on jet blue right now.
Well, I mean, you know, there's not, again, we can't make everything perfect, but as long as we can make it somewhat predictable this far out.
I just don't like to see one day floating in there between two days.
Yeah, that's fine. I like the 11th.
So would that be something that we could?
You could still vote with the chain. Yeah, you could vote with the chain.
I mean, we can always revote if we absolutely find that that day would be horrible. What do you think would be the best day? There.
Tickets, I mean, the Monday or the Tuesday. I mean, I'm looking at other Tuesdays. I see other release days on Tuesdays. So.
I'd say the Monday, Monday.
Monday might be the best day.
Three days in a row. That's a little consistent, I guess, more than it. Monday, Elon.
So we can just, you, you can vote that with the, with the amendment of making the, the release day of in April on the 11th instead of the 13th. We could do that.
All right. Any other input? Or do we feel like we've looked at this? I know that people are really starting to.
Yeah, they want it.
Ask, you know, it's always.
They want it.
I can never tell if.
It's a good catch, Megan.
Like they need to know now, or if they just know that it comes now and it feels like they, you know, but it's important to be able to kind of plan this. So I would ask for a motion to approve the draft or to approve the midfield public schools calendar for 2021, 2022 with the amendment that the April 13th, 2022 date for professional development day would be struck and replaced by the, by Monday, April 11th, 2022.
Right.
So moved.
Megan, so moved. Leo, second, and then I will do our roll call. So Leo Brem.
Hi.
And Tim Knight.
Hi.
And Megan Glenn. And Anna Mae O'Shea Brook.
Hi.
And Jessica Riley. I and Andrew, you could care less about this, right? Congratulations, almost. But at least you don't have to think about this one.
And for those that are wondering that are watching, the school day, the school year begins on September 1st next year. So if you're wondering, you know, we'll, we'll post it online tomorrow, but September 1st.
You know, unless there's a pandemic or meteor that falls from the sky or something, but it never happens. Okay. So I'm sorry. Do we have any? Now that we've gone there, I'm sorry, I forgot the calendar. Do we have any informational items? You're muted, my friend.
Anna Mae does.
Yes, she does.
Oh, I do. Yes. Sorry. Thank you.
Megan is running this for us. This is a group project tonight.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to propose reinstating our office hours and would like to know if we can start this coming Tuesday, the 16th, either 12 to one or six to seven, and we would only have maximum of two school committee members there. So we're not violating any open meeting laws, et cetera. So
this would be done by Zoom.
Yeah.
And would be scheduled times for people in specific? Or kind of people who would come, you know, in a certain.
Stand up genius.
Yeah.
Or something.
Something like that. Or, I mean, I think since you're, you're kind of.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, we just send out the Zoom link and people show up. But if, if you, I mean, what do you guys think? I, that's how I was thinking. It's no formal sign up.
A town calendar, right? Oh, and we have a town calendar. We have a, like, could that be something that goes on the school calendar on the website, Jeff? Or what?
It has in the past. It has.
It has in the past. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we had stopped doing, or kind of at the beginning of this, maybe not this year, but the, at some point, we had stopped doing office hours because very few people were coming and then the pandemic hit and we didn't really kind of start them again through, through Zoom. But it's certainly time to, to be able to give people kind of a less kind of a more intimate kind of discussion with.
My, my view, I mean, I'm torn, but it's like initially make it easy if people want to go. Oh, shoot, I didn't sign up. Like just. Okay. Hey, oh gosh, last minute, maybe I want to pop in. I did have that question.
Exactly. No.
Only looking at logistics on that. Yep. All right.
Yeah.
Do you uh, want people to essentially populate who will be at that, like that simply respond to you or respond to me only or?
You guys can respond to me, you know, either the 12 to one or six to seven slot, I think either or. And then, and I'll, let's see, how best to do this? Jeff, would I ask Andrea to set up a Zoom through?
I was gonna say.
Doesn't have to be posted.
Like we're doing here.
Okay.
Yeah. And if, if, if people outside of our, so we have authentications in all our Zooms that we have in, in-house. So that wouldn't allow people outside of our, our network to come in. So we'd have to do a webinar like this so that you could get folks to come into it.
Okay, beautiful. All right, great. So then, and then we, how would we, we'd share it out? Do you do it via Aspen or do you do it in social media? How, how would you? Yeah, we did last. Yeah. And I think we also asked, you know, posted.
Our agenda through Aspen, because the school committee now has its own kind of Aspen.
Yeah.
abilities, which is great on that. Unfortunately, we ended up having a kind of a technical and labor problem with that. So Dr. Marston released the agenda with his, with his.
Perfect.
For tonight, but we can, we can make that happen. And in fact.
Okay.
All right. So we'll.
Very good. Very good.
Great. Please, anybody get, tell Anna Mae when you would be available and we can make sure that we populate those times. Okay.
Okay, great.
All right. Any other informational items? Anything anybody wants to tell us right now? I'm sure I'm going to kick myself if I don't remember them, but I, I don't have anything right now. I think we've kind of thoroughly discussed. Anyone else? Andrew, anything you really want to? No, you have been a great contributor today. Thank you. All right. Well, then we will look at our future agenda items in April. Well, actually, possibly in March, we will be discussing bus fees. Um, and we'll have to kind of arrange that. We'll, we'll put that out there. But then in April, we will be having a workshop on the standards based report card feedback. Anna Mae will be contributing about student feedback and that agenda item that she'd like to pursue. And we'll also have a mascot task force update. So and then as of now, our next meeting is on April 1st, 2021. And we will let the community know if that is different. And at this point, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All right. So Leo Brem.
Hi.
And Tim Knight.
Hi.
And Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Anna Mae O'Shea Brook.
Hi.
And Jessica Riley. I, the meeting is adjourned. It is 9:26 PM. I cannot wait to spend time with all of you again. And our next meeting will be on April 1st. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Of you who hung out with us as long as you did. Always appreciated.